I'm gonna call the meeting. And there's a meeting in progress, so that's good. Got it. All right, I'd like to call a meeting to order. All that care to please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, would you please lead us in prayer?
Let's pray. Let me follow. We just thank you for this day. And I thank you for all you do for us. And just Lord, I thank you for the favor you bestowed upon this city and the and the work that we're doing and just guiding us and directing us through the things that financially we have to do regarding the challenges facing the city, but also the opportunities. I Lord pray just God for this winter weather. And Lord, to just do its best to pass this by. And I pray for our crews and all those that have to work out it, work out in it. I pray for just the safety or public safety workers and those in our public works. With our community, just guide and direct us in all that we do and say tonight, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance of the United States of America.
To the Republic, which is stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. I love it.
But we make it through, don't we? We make it through.
We're synchronized right now.
Your speakers must be working better than mine. All right, I'm gonna open this up for citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, you will be given three minutes to speak. Just, Chris, they wave their hands or something. How do we do this?
Yeah, they can raise their hand or throw something in the chat and we'll see that and we'll call them out.
All right, we're waiting to see if we have any citizens that wish to speak for it to anything. I'm not seeing anything, but I want to make sure everybody has time to to speak if they wish to.
There is someone now, yeah, Misha.
Very well. Misha, would you please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to address the council, whatever issue you'd like.
Hi, I'm actually Camry Cowan. I'm on my wife's account. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
But my my wife and I live at five six six Cherrywood Avenue here in Republic. And we would like to talk about a city ordinance. There's a current liquor ordinance. It's six hundred point zero three zero. And she and I have been in talks with the sixty West Development about possibly leasing a space and opening up a cocktail lounge at sixty West. We've been in talks with Ross Murray, the leasing agent for the property, and Sean Cote Need, the landlord and contractor. And both of them have expressed a desire to have our business at their development. But right now, we're kind of stuck because of the current liquor ordinance that requires at least fifty percent of sales at an establishment selling liquor or serving liquor, serving alcohol to come from food. And really what we are wanting is for the business to be drink focused, a cocktail lounge, not a restaurant with a bar. We feel like we already have plenty of those in Republic with heiress and bears and big whiskies and Flat Creek and just one more. And so because we would like for the business to be drink focused, we think that reaching fifty percent of sales would probably be impossible based on our business model that we are interested in establishing. We think that this would be a good thing for the community. The, I mean, currently, we don't have any drink focused establishments in Republic, probably because of this ordinance. And we've talked to a lot of community members who have been, they've expressed a lot of excitement at the idea of this coming to Republic. There are places like Wire Road Brewery that just opened up that have been packed and that's out in Battlefield and people have talked about. Everyone we have talked about has said, we need something like this to come to Republic because right now we have to go to Springfield for an environment like a cocktail lounge, which is frustrating for a lot of people that they have to travel that far in order to go to that kind of establishment. And we think that the city growth that we're experiencing is only going to attract more people who are interested in a business like this. In addition, we think that this would bring in some business from surrounding communities like Billings and Clever and Battlefield and so on. And so really, we are just asking that the council would consider amending or removing the liquor ordinance so that business like ours would be able to be established in Republic.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming before us tonight. I do know that the city is working on this issue and may have an update for council in the next month or so, so I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. And I do know staff is working on that, so I believe the council will have something to consider in the upcoming weeks or months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens wishing to address council and anything not on the agenda? All right, seeing no others, I'm gonna close citizen participation. We'll move on to the consent agenda. There's only one thing, if I'm reading our agenda correctly, only one thing on the consent agenda tonight, that's the approval of January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, City Council minutes. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda, please. And as you make your motions, please state your name so Laura can get it down. I think I saw a motion Franklin, do we have a second?
I can't Mitchell.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes six to zero. I'm counting correctly, right? We've got six council members on tonight.
I got it. Chris is still celebrating the Bengals win.
Yep, yeah. Moving on to boards, commissions, and committee schedule, we have a board of adjustments meeting on February third, twenty twenty two, planning and zoning meeting on February seventh, city council meetings on February fifteenth and February twenty second. So we've got back to back city council meetings. Moving on to old business and table tabled items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill twenty two dash oh three by title only, please.
Mitch.
Grooms motion.
Right, we've got a motion. Can we count that other one as a second? All right, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing and directing the issuance sale and delivery of special obligation bonds, series twenty twenty two of the City of Republic, Missouri, and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith.
Thank you, ma'am. Now staff presented this last time. Do we have any updates from staff for this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you should have been presented from the clerk's office or from legal, a an amendment to this ordinance to reflect the vacant spaces because now we have the interest rates. Which the market, the bond sold today, so you should have an amendment before you from Mark Graham.
Ah, yes. Okay. So with the amendment, we would need to amend this. So I would entertain a motion and a second to amend the bill twenty two dash oh three to comply with the amendment suggested.
Some moved Gurkey.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion to amend is granted. Anything now that that is done, staff? Or Mr. Cameron?
But I always want to make sure from our legal counsel or Mark Graham, does that require a roll call vote or does that require? I just want to make sure we're doing that correctly on the procedure.
Well, that was just the motion to amend.
Right, but can that be done? Can that be done through? Does that require a roll call? Is that just for? Does not require one? Thanks, Mark. Okay. So I'm gonna give you an update. So, starting with the S and P first, for amending the ordinance. So, going back from our last meeting, everything has taken place. So we had our S and P call, or we got our S and P rating. The good news was, our rating was not downgraded. The unfortunate news is our rating was not upgraded, which is actually kind of a which would have been somewhat of a shock to us considering the challenges that we were experiencing in twenty seventeen while we'd get an upgrade. So maybe expectation wise, was that would probably been a year you've been downgraded. But the good news is, is that today, whenever that effort went to the market, there was an extremely strong market for our bonds. And so there was just to, I gotta, I gotta read this specifically. I believe there was a hundred. We were issuing forty, forty five million, four hundred and forty five thousand bonds that were successfully sold today. There were over a hundred and twenty one point six million in offers for those bonds. So basically, there was more money in the market after our bonds, and we actually had bonds available. And so as a result, in that discussion, I think it was the underwriters working with Stiefel that were working, I think he said this is the first time in two months that they'd actually seen the yields change in the municipal market, which was a huge win for our community. And so, which would have put us probably well, it's I would say well over three, it would have put us over three percent on the interest. So they did reduce the yield that put us at two point nine nine, so which is actually extremely good. Put that in perspective, when Martin was Stiefel and I met back, starting in November to worked on this with Mark Graham and Bessie S. Rock, all those folks that we've worked with on this development. It is, I think, jumped, Martin, if I'm correct, thirty one basis points on municipal, on the municipal market. So we saw an increase of thirty one basis points from that point. So to see us only increase twelve because of the total number of those that were in the market and how many people were bidding on those. And there was something that some people, Martin, what was the someone were bidding on it four times?
Yeah, so thanks, David. And that's a great recap so far. Yeah, we we really, it was a very great day to enter the market today. The last month or so, we've really seen steady increases in the municipal market rates. Interest rates have just been moving up as a result of the Fed's action just just of announcing that they're gonna start taking some action probably at this next meeting. So they haven't done anything quite yet. They have started tapering or slowing some of their asset purchases, which is causing some of the interest rates to increase because that's kind of the expectation of where things will go once these meetings start taking place, starting in March. And today was quite a relief in the in the bond market. Yesterday was somewhat steady, so interest rates didn't necessarily move up, but I don't think they went down. And then today was a much better tone in the municipal market and really hit the market at a great point. So with that, you were able to get those hundred and twenty one million of orders for forty five million of bonds. So many of the maturities were what we call in the industries oversubscribed, which just means you have more orders than bonds available. So in some instances, we had just enough orders or one times the subscription or one times the amount of orders available. And we had up to four point four three times the amount of orders. And in particular, I'll tell you one, in twenty forty seven, there's a maturity amount of about thirteen million, which is a term bond where we aggregated numerous maturities to one to have a term bond. And that was thirteen million. We ended up receiving forty three million of orders for that one bond. And that is about three and a quarter times the amount of orders for for that piece right there. But overall, it was a very strong day. David and Megan and Jared and Andrew and your team did a wonderful job pulling everything together. It's really has been a collective effort and some of it is probably more of a baptism by fire for some, but we really appreciate everyone's effort to move this ball forward and move it uphill because this is really gonna enable you to do a lot of great things in the community to get yourself ready, not only for some mandates that were in the past, but also to get you set up for some growth that keeps coming, that keeps coming. So wanted to say congratulations. Thank you for letting us work with you on this financing. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions from council? Mr. Cameron, did that cover everything you wanted to cover?
It did. I just wanna, I wanna highlight just one thing that was very promising at the overall is to see banks in Missouri that were buying our bonds. So it wasn't just, I think, the individual, was it Mark that we were dealing with, Martin? He said, obviously, I think even out of the Stiefel office out of Springfield, there were several purchased. So the word about Republic and just the growth and the investing in Republic definitely lent itself to our favor today and seeing those being sold locally in our region and in our state is a big time. It's not just a it's great to see the orders, but you want to see orders in your state because that sends a message to me for our community that other people are buying in, investing into what's going on in Republic. It's not just a I think something's going on down in the southwest part of the state. It's like I'm investing my money into it. I just wish the S and P would have seen it that way, but that's my only statement.
Thank you, sir. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're good.
Any other questions from council? Discussion? All right, seeing none, then I need a motion and a second for the final passage of bill twenty two dash oh three as amended today on February first, twenty twenty two.
Motion, Wilson.
Second, Dyckman.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mitchell. Can you, aye? There we go. Sorry, I can hear you.
Sorry.
It's okay. Councilmember Gurkey.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Dyckman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Grooms.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Congratulations to the staff. This is a very big deal. It's gonna put us in a position to move things in the right direction and really do appreciate all your hard work. Moving on to new business, this is item number three on our agenda. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill twenty two dash oh four by title only.
Motion, Wilson.
We've got a motion by Wilson and a second by Grooms. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title One, Chapter one twenty, City Administrator duties.
David, are you trying to change your job again?
I am, very much so. So this is just kind of a cleanup in reviewing a certain situation. I guess it was on a purchasing issue at one point. That reading through it, there is a discrepancy in the charter versus the ordinances that we have. The charter outlines that time to report the financials as needed or presented it. The ordinance states it's done monthly. So having that cleared cleared up, what I would like to do is if the council would like an additional one on a monthly basis, but the presentation, I plan to do quarterly analysis unless we ran into like a COVID situation where it was needed a presentation on a monthly basis, but the need to do a quarterly analysis for you to see it. Plus, you're already getting them by email that they can be reviewed. But what I want to do is do a quarterly analysis that aligns with the charter. I suspect that probably what happened was some time ago, the council wasn't getting it, so they strengthened it so the away from the charter, I'm not really sure. And then the second part of that ordinance amendment reflects that press releases would go through the mayor. Since we have a PIO, when I was established, believed that whenever we didn't have a PIO back then, so probably it was warranted at some point to have the mayor review all that stuff. Right now, we have a PIO, it goes through my office. And so we're making amendments to reflect how we're actually operating today. But I don't want to say we've been violating it, but no, the mayor's not been getting his sign off on the press releases. So we've kind of been like, I just all those little cleanup areas we do. So that's how we're changing it.
Do we have any questions or discussions from council? Mr. Wilson, do you recall why we switched from going from quarterly to a weekly or, you know, every every meeting where we were going through financials?
It was a long time ago. I don't really remember when.
Okay. Any questions or discussions from council? Anybody really want me to look at every single press release that goes up? Please, no. All right, seeing no discussion, please remember this is a first read, so please get with staff before the next read so we can have a final look. Moving on to other business, specifically resolutions, this is item number four on our agenda. This is twenty two dash R dash oh three, a resolution of the City Council authorizing payment for emergency repair of a pump at Shuler Creek Lift Station. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution twenty two dash R dash oh three.
Motion, Graham.
Second, Franklin.
Yeah, motion and a second. Um, is there an amendment to this one as well, or did I read that wrong? No amendment, I read it wrong. Okay. So we have staff here to give an update on this issue?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a pump failure at the Shuler Creek Lift Station. One of four, we can operate on three, but it's essential that we get that repaired. The pump is under warranty, so it's a prorated warranty. It'll reduce the repair cost from ninety six thousand to fifty three thousand. This is one of those emergency type purchases because of the threshold. We need to have the council approval.
What went wrong?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
The thirty in thirty seconds or less, what went wrong?
So the statement from our pump manufacturer is that they've never actually seen this before. But we spun a bearing and it threw a bunch of things into the pump. But we don't know why. So they actually gave us a better prorated warranty just because they've never seen it happen before. So I don't suspect that it would happen again, but it's one of those things.
Questions from council?
I assume as soon as this would not be affected by some of the future stuff we have going on with the treatment facility, it sounds like it's something that just needs to be done now regardless of future changes.
Yeah, correct. This is, this is a lift station that was actually enhanced in twenty seventeen, I believe. It was just wrapping up about the time I started at the city. We'd invested about two million, if I remember correctly, two or three million in that lift station to upgrade it. Now, everything that comes down to this lift station will be improved in this effort that we're undertaking now.
Just out of curiosity, when things like this happen, what fund does that come out of?
It's a waste of money. It's a Yeah, so we we budget for emergency repairs like this. Usually it's to the tune of about a hundred and fifty thousand for lift stations. We just, you know, after years and years of doing this at the city, we expect some type of failure, you know, running lift stations. It's just I won't call it typical, but it happens fairly frequently, at least once a year. So we kind of plan for these things.
Awesome.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, do you have a spare voter?
I'm I'm glad you asked. Yeah, so if you recall, council authorized us to purchase a backup pump. Now, this pump that we purchased is a pump that will go to every lift station, but it would suffice in this instance, but the lead time we're, it was twenty weeks when we ordered it. It's, we're still about ten weeks out. But talking to Mr. Cameron today, just the the importance of the Shuler Creek Lift Station and the amount of flow we see there, we're probably gonna buy an individual backup pump just for there that we can put in place because there's there's four of them and we're bound to have these issues over the years.
Good idea.
Are we suffering any damage right now as a result of this being out?
No.
Mr. Dyckman?
Andrew, is is this pump one of the ones that when we had the major outage a few years ago, that, you know, we had stuff going in the creek? Is it this one of the pumps?
No, no, this was, this was a an upgraded pump after that incident. Now, last year, we did have a control failure. But it had to do with the, you recall, the, we had a cold weather snap. It was about exactly a year ago. The the power went on and off and it got some of our controls, but other than that, we haven't had too much issue.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify on your question, we did add a whereas clause about amending the budget for this additional purchase. There was an amended resolution.
Ah, there it is. Okay, so I was right. There was an amended resolution.
That should be the, that should be the next resolution.
Hold on, let me go back to the email. All right, so Andrew.
Okay, that makes sense. Sorry.
I understand the disconnect now. Great. All right, so there's no amendment to resolution twenty two dash R dash oh three. We've had the discussion. We've answered questions. As this is a resolution, we can call it directly for a vote, which is what I'll do. All those in favor of resolution twenty two dash R dash oh three?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and I see Mr. Updike's here, so resolution passes seven to zero. Moving on to item number five on our agenda, this is twenty two dash R dash oh four, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the City Administrator to pay for administrative fees and other costs of issuance related to bonding for wastewater and public works improvements not to exceed one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. You know, motion and a second to take up resolution twenty two dash R dash oh three.
Motion.
That was everybody. I'm gonna say I heard Dyckman motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Grooms. I've got a motion and a second. And is there an amendment for this resolution? All right. So what is the amendment?
It, that's a whereas statement just to, that we will amend the budget to reflect this expenditure.
Excellent. So before we get into the details of this resolution, let's do a motion to an amendment to amend the resolution. Is there anyone willing to do a motion to amend the resolution to conform with the submitted updates?
Wilson.
Wilson did a motion, Franklin did a second. All those in favor of amendment, raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution is amended. Now, would staff like to address the amended resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So when we are doing this bond issue, there's obviously fees and charges that are associated with it. I believe it's around a hundred and sixty two thousand. We made it a hundred, not to exceed a hundred and seventy five thousand because it's not completely when everything's done. Just like it would be in your own home loan, they'll ask you the question, do you want to add your closing cost to the loan or do you just want to pay them? Well, in this situation, we have the cash position in the wastewater fund to pay it. We prefer just to pay the fees. They were normally gonna be included in the bond, which is again, not uncommon. People do it with their home loan. But in this situation, because we had the cash, considering a hundred and seventy five thousand with interest over twenty five years, it adds up. So it's another opportunity for us just to save money. Albeit small, but over twenty five years, if you bought a house, twenty five years, a hundred and seventy five thousand, three percent, it adds up. So we're gonna pay it out of our account, and that's what we're asking for tonight. Just think it's prudent. And while we have the cash, don't add it to the debt.
Questions, comments, discussion, council? Seeing none, I think I'm gonna speak for everybody when we say we appreciate you not treating money like monopoly money. You're taking it seriously and watching the funds, and thank you for that. So the resolution twenty two dash R dash oh four as amended on February first, twenty twenty two, as it's a resolution, we can call it directly for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes seven to zero. Moving on to reports from staff, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know sure if Mark, yeah, I think I see Mark Graham still on the on the call and Martin, Becky S. Rock with the bonding, Megan Cook, I'm telling you, Megan McCullough, Andrew, Lisa, Rachel, Jared, I can name every single person that had to pull together resources and Mark Graham will attest to this, that I think we saw I don't know, I bet I've got a hundred inboxes for my bonding file. I think there was thirty, thirteen pages I could recall in the S and P call, and then there's due diligence pages that we fill out that is pretty much a full fledged physical of our organization financially inside and out and how we operate, how we function. Councilmember Gurkey, I want to thank you for the work. This was a, with, just to give you a backdrop, whenever we started working on the Public Works Building and then we had, as the mayor will tell you very eloquently eloquently, that he did not want to go to jail with the wastewater plant. We're under an order to be under construction and completed by April of twenty twenty five. And when our initial bonding or ballot, or I wouldn't call it ballot, the dude, the Public Works Building kind of fell through the gaps. I immediately called Martin Gaffory with Stiefel. I brought you an engagement letter. You all acted extremely quickly, so thank you for the latitude to do that. Because I showed you Stiefel, and then we've worked with Mark Graham and Stiefel ever since I've been here, very well known group. And they did not disappoint. They own the municipal market for the most part in Missouri. And so you allowed me to engage without doing proposals because because time was of the essence. I think their work and the effort that they've demonstrated with the team is nothing short of amazing. And Mr. Mayor, you know this, you took the call shortly after I found out, and those that were on the call when I found out the rates. I was pretty ecstatic. Hear me talk about the favor and the favor of God upon this city. I'm telling you what happened today to see that those things changed. I saw it happen first thing happened today, and the mayor, you got to hear it on the phone call. But my staff and this team and Mark and Martin, Becky and everybody that helped us and Martin, for some of the short texts or emails, like what the heck is going on? You've been a real trooper to help us, but I just want to thank everybody for that. You've been a real trooper to, um, to help us, but, uh, I just want to thank everybody for that. Mr. Mayor, like you stated today on the phone in our conversations, like there's just some stuff that we're not really, we don't have to communicate to the community that we're trying to, we're doing our job. We do view every single percentage and every, every sing, single basis point that we can get. We are taking this personal. When the S and P side did not go our way, we responded back and retorted with a response and really did not get the response we were looking for. But today I think the market spoke for us and I think that it was a good day for our community. Whether they understand or all yields and our values and coupons and all those things that Martin can talk through in his sleep. Uh, but I just, there was a lot of work and there was a lot of heavy lifting and I just want to commend every single employee and all of our advisors, those at Fisher Boyle. That I just have not mentioned, I just want to thank them and I want to congratulate the community on something that it's a twenty five year bond. Uh, that, you know, when you go into debt for that long and it's the, it's twice as large as the largest bond ever been issued. And to get that kind of favor for our community is, is something special. So, uh, I want to thank a lot of people and then mayor for your support and council for your support, Eric Gerke, councilmember Gerke for helping and everybody's got a hundred emails in their inbox too. Uh, we're going to take a small siesta from that. So, so Mark, no disrespect or Martin, if I don't get you know, an email from you for two weeks, I will be kind of happy, but, uh, not really. Appreciate always working with you guys, uh, as well. So, um, so I want to talk about the other side of all this because we're still talking about wastewater. So we're working on the ARPA funds and that is, I just want to give you an update because Andrew and I have, uh, in the middle of this and, and um, I've been in Jefferson City quite a bit, um, and working and having conversations. I will tell you that we've had a number of connections with elected officials, both in, in the, the state and, and the legislature in the senate, both state and federal, uh, regulate, uh, representatives, both here at city hall presenting our, um, our position and why we believe we're positioned for this, uh, these dollars and stating our case. I will tell you that those, those conversations have been favorable. I don't want to make any type of statement of as to what we're continuing to work on or that we're not working. I anticipate that we'll still be going to Jeff City, uh, at least two or three more times. I know I'm going to be back up there, uh, both Andrew and I. But I just want to commend Andrew, uh, I, I still laugh as walking through the Capitol a couple of weeks ago, going four floors and spending all day. Uh, but we had just a very productive day, um, at the Capitol. And I just want to tell you again, it's like you said, Mr. Mayor, we don't view this as monopoly money for the community. We take every dollar that we can gather. It's not just political talk. It's like, we carry this on our sleeve. Like what's the best way we could minimize the impact because we know you, the elected body, you asked me what keeps us up at night? It's having to go to our community, asking for a rate increase, knowing it impacts them. Have we done the best job we can when no one's looking to minimize it? Some people may not understand or appreciate it and that's understandable because that's not our job to communicate every single thing we say, that's our job. But I just want to tell you that we are working very hard and I appreciate all the legislators that have worked and taken time to meet with us. We've met with a number of them. They've given us the time to visit. I just appreciate that effort. And then, uh, just want to give a few quick updates, the quiet zone. So you will be seeing in, uh, this, this comes back from a couple of years ago. People were asking us to address the quiet zone. Andrew has got a quote for fifty thousand dollars for an engineer to do this work. Uh, we will be bringing a resolution to the council. I mean, it can be projected from anywhere from a half a million to a million dollars to address it, but we will have a public hearing if this is the council's direction to actually do the fifty thousand dollar study, figure out what the cost estimates would be. But again, measuring that with the street improvements that people are begging us for to take a million dollars to do those improvements for street, that's just going to be a discussion for the community in this council to get feedback. Is that where we want to use the money? But again, because it kind of got shelved after we did the initial quiet zone study, but we did not just want to tell the community that was interested before that we just disregarded their comments. And I think it's worth us at least bringing for your consideration, analyzing what the cost would be and bringing that back. Uh, even though, another item is we're purchasing a vehicle in the fire department. Even though the purchasing policy does not require me to report, I just want, anytime we're buying equipment that you budgeted, especially things that are new, you were gracious enough to change the purchasing policy to allow me up to fifty thousand dollars. So spending forty two, forty three thousand dollars, it's in your admin report, you'll see tomorrow. But I just want to communicate that we're buying this vehicle. It is a budgeted item. But, uh, you see a new vehicle, like we didn't approve it. Our new purchasing policy allows us to purchase that. I just wanted to report that to you. Um, great to hear the, the announcement with the iron grain district, uh, and it got on MM. I think that what you're seeing now is the beginning to a completely different economy in a lot of ways with the retail marketing uh, development aspect of it. We also own property right across from Amazon that we're also working with the same developer. Special shout out to Shannon Handwerker, Randy Majors, with Majors Development, uh, sixty five million dollar investment right across the road from Amazon, having, they've announced potential of food, uh, which we've been talking about with them since October of twenty twenty. Great partners, great people, another great investor in our community, but all of our businesses, we don't want to just celebrate one. We're appreciative of every business that's working, but they definitely, desperately need food places out on sixty. But I think alone with the future of widening MM, the future of a regional park and sports complex in that area, potential hotels, things of that nature. Plus, here with the property directly across the road, which is going to be Hankins Farm, uh, which is a development agreement you all have approved. I think you're getting ready to see a lot of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty two is going to be extremely busy. Uh, and I think you're going to see this on your agendas quite a bit. I will tell you, uh, the snow and ice, we're anticipating ice. I don't want to just lead into the gloom. Usually I'm pretty optimistic about it, but I suspect we're going to see ice and then probably that packed with snow. What I would tell the community is be extremely patient because street graders, blades do not move ice. So doing our best to get out there, our crews, I just asked for some patience and some grace on this one because once this ice goes down and snow on top of it, top of it, it's going to be a lot of hard work. So I anticipate probably the most of the heavy lifting could potentially be done on Saturday as it begins to break off. They will be salting and doing what they can. I just encourage people, they don't have to get out. If it's bad, stay inside, do the best. And I'm going to end with this, as much as it pains me, it pains me, uh, councilmember Updike. I'm going to congratulate your Cincinnati Bengals for their victory over the Chiefs, but, um, I know, I, I see it. I, so, but hey, hey, I'm sure you've taken a lot of grief, but anyway, I'm not sure it's the biggest city business. At the same time, I know it's important, but Mr. Mayor, it's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any discussion, comments from council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Franklin.
Just, just a quick minute. I'd like to thank everybody for all their hard work on the bond issue for sure. Um, and, and echoing David's sentiment, if it's dangerous out there this week on the roads, uh, please turn around, you know, don't fall down and just thanking everybody in advance for getting out in this cold weather. Uh, it's going to be miserable the next couple of days. And so thank you for getting out there and making the efforts to keep our city safe.
Anything else, Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Uh, speaking of quiet zones, I was walking at J R Martin Park this morning about six thirty. Train came through headed towards Springfield and he pretty much blew his horn the whole distance through Republic. He, he let up maybe a second, a time or two.
I think Mr. Wilson's tipping his hand on how he's going to vote on this issue. Any other comments from council?
Councilman Gerke, I was just going to echo, um, great job on the bond. It was a lot of work and, um, that's really, uh, awesome how that came together. And then, uh, thanks to the city too, the, you know, working really hard on that, um, uh, sixty five million dollars in new money comes from that mixed development in, in town. It's pretty awesome to see good people spending money in town. So that's, uh, that's a big kudo. So I, I'm excited for that and thanks for everyone's hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Anyone else? Chris, go ahead. Brad about the Bengals. It, I get it.
I'm, I'm excited. A lifelong fan, you know, it tickles me to death that they're in there. So yeah, I'm, I'm excited.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I will remind everybody that there is a trail meeting coming up on February twenty second, following a very short council meeting. We're going to open that up for the public. I think we're going to have that over at the rec center, if I'm correct on that.
You're correct.
Excellent. Thank you. So we're going to invite the, the community to come out and talk to us about their thoughts on the trail system. Hope to get a wide variety of people there so we hear all voices. And I will say that my boys are nine and eleven. I will be volunteering them to go scrape driveways. Gerke, can I grab your boys on the way?
Go for it.
Mr. Mitchell, I'm sure I can probably get your kids along too. We could have a whole crew of kids.
Please take them. They love it.
Yeah, I've got two, I've got two teenagers. I'll volunteer also.
We've, we've already got a group of about ten. This is going to work well. Uh, with that, please remain careful, remain safe, remain warm and have a good evening. Meet and enjoy.